Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 3, 2019 Glendale Housing Authority meeting being called to order at, I don't know what the name is. 3:06 PM. May I have the roll call?
Authority members divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Yes.
Razian.
Yes.
Chair Agajanian.
Present. May I please have your report?
Sure. Before we read the report, just like to state that there is an item for closed session that we'll be recessing to. Mr. Chair and Housing Authority, the agenda for the December 3, 2019.
These are new circumstances as we're moving into this. I just realized I should be using this microphone, which is why it's here. Agenda for the December 3, 2019 regular meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Wednesday, November 27, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And if I may, I'll just read the closed session item now so you can recess at the conclusion of this meeting. Two ways to conference with real property negotiators. Agency negotiators attending closed session are Yasmin Beers, Rubik Galanian, Mike Garcia, Gillian Baimite, Philip Lanzafam, Peter Zovak, Mike Fortney, and Michelle Flynn. Instructions to negotiators will concern the price in terms for the acquisition of property. Property location number one, 1239 South Glendale Avenue. Negotiating parties are Glendale Avenue Properties LLC. Property location number three is 625 North Louis Street. Negotiating parties, North Brand Mixed Use LLC. With that, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
I'll move the minutes. Second. May I have them?
Authority members divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Razian.
Yes.
Chair Agajanian.
Yes. What's next?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. The members of the Housing Authority make question or response to the speaker, but there's no debate or decision. Matter may be referred to staff through the Executive Director for Investigation Report, and there were no cards submitted for this portion.
Okay. Oral communication is closed. What's next?
There is any authority member or staff comments.
Authority member or staff comments? Okay. Actually, I have one issue that I want to discuss. Last week, I guess, or week before, I guess last week, we approved the $300 per family members that they are disabled or 75 years and over, and the other member of the family should be 62 and older. And apparently, the way I understand now, when they go to register, they say there are problems to register. So is anybody can explain exactly what is it that we want to do? Because the way I understood, that those who are disabled and those who are 75 years and older, they will be in one pool among them if they are not over, if we don't have over 1,000 applications, then they will receive the financial support, which was $300. If there are over 1,000 people will apply, then we will go through lottery system. But now, when they go to the housing or they come to City Hall, that's not what they understand. And they say if you are not disabled, will be, they are not going to get it? Or can somebody explain to me?
Sure. Housing Chair Agajanian, members of the Housing Authority. I believe Mr. Zovak is in the audience, and if you can make your way up, Mr. Zovak, and give an overview of what the council approved last June, as well as had the conversation again in October in terms of the program parameters before moving forward with the application process that we're undergoing at this time through December 12th. So with that, Mr. Zovak.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Housing Authority. In October, and after a series of meetings prior to October, in October, the Housing Authority approved the final program parameters of what's being called the Monthly Housing Subsidy Program. And the way that the Housing Authority and City Council approved that program is that the minimum qualifications are that every household member must be a senior, age 62 and over. Anyone who with a household where a member is age 75 and older will be given priority. At least one member of every household must be disabled in order to qualify and apply. Each household member must, each household must be a renter within the city of Glendale, and they must be, in terms of total household income, extremely low income levels. So that was the program that was approved by the City Council, and those are the parameters that are being advertised and implemented at the application center.
Okay. My problem is with the issue that you read, that they should be over 75 and disabled? I mean, if over 75 is not going to be in the pool? It's not disabled, let's say.
Everyone to apply, to apply, everyone must be age 62 and older.
Right.
For those that have a member who is age 75 and older, they would be given priority.
Right.
As a separate qualification, in order to apply, the minimum requirements, someone in the household must be disabled.
Okay. The disabled has priority. And if you're 75 and over and you're not disabled, still you're part of that priority.
No. No. Mr. Agajanian, everybody must, every household must have one person that's disabled. Every single household. And the idea behind it was that council really wanted to direct this assistance to the most needy, and thinking that would be seniors and those that are disabled. And so that's why they're two separate, two separate qualification items. Must be 62, must be disabled. If somebody in the household is 75 or above, they're going to have somebody disabled because that's a minimum qualification, then they take priority over the rest of the people that are there with a disability. So everybody in the program must have one person with a disability in the household.
So that's priority.
Right? That's part of, that's kind of a condition, basically.
So being, I'm sorry.
The disability is a minimum requirement for every applicant household, whether they're 62 or over or 75.
No, I understand. But I think what I'm understanding here is if you have a household with equal age limits, right? Let's say 75 and 75, one is disabled, the other one isn't. Or 80 and 80, one is disabled, the other one isn't. The one that has disability would take precedent over the other, the one that...
In an eventual lottery, every household member...
Oh, the other one doesn't even qualify.
Correct.
Correct.
They will all have a disability for those people that apply to the program.
And these parameters were set June 11 of 2019 before the Housing Authority, where we went down and covered all of the criteria and gave the council the option based on what the pleasure of the council was in terms of what that criteria should be. And ultimately, what the decision was, as Mr. Zovak indicated, related to the 62 and over disabled as a priority, as a baseline, I should say, as a baseline.
Okay. Councilmember Quintero.
Yeah. So I was not on board June 11 this year. I have a question. So how is disability defined? Is this social security disability, or how?
There are two ways that it will be looked at, and as we discussed in a couple of the staff reports that we presented to the City Council. The easiest way is a disability designation through social security, typically through SSI designation. Those that may not have an SSI designation of disability but do have some type of disability that they're claiming, they're allowed to apply. And if they were selected in a lottery process, at that point, they would have to prove that disability through that second means.
Through a doctor's...
Correct.
And that's under Section 504, I guess, based on the discussions we had in June.
Yeah, a process similar to Section 8 process.
Correct.
Does the staff know if people, say, pass 72 or 74, receiving social security is, I don't think there's going to be any requirement for any disability or anything else. Age alone is enough for them to be on social security, correct?
Well, you're either receiving social security that you're earning through previous employment...
Your work.
Or SSI that you're receiving as being over 62 and having some type of disability, up to a point at which, once you're over 65, that SSI could become automatic just for being over 65.
Even though you haven't contributed to...
Correct.
Social Security.
Right. Right. It's kind of a fallback assistance program for those that didn't earn enough credits to receive social security employment-related benefits.
So basically, older recipients are going to have to go to a doctor and establish some disability, correct?
Correct. Correct. And there were cases that, when we had been meeting with clients as they're applying, that maybe are not receiving SSI per se, but do have some type of disability that they've identified with and said they'd be willing, are able to approve it if and when they were selected in the lottery process and as they go through the screening after that.
Quite often, a percentage is set, whether it's a VA or workers' comp or whatever it is. You're 10% disabled, 30%, 50%. How are we going to handle that?
Well, partial disabilities is something we're going to have to look at and see how often they might crop up. It hasn't really come up in any of the conversations with the clients that we've been meeting with so far, but we'll wait until we get to that point to take a look at it further.
Councilmember divine.
What are the numbers looking like right now?
The first week and a half of the program was strong. We were having anywhere between 400 to 500 people applying on a daily basis. More than that showing up, learning of the requirements, and then not applying because they did not qualify. Last count has over 2,000 applicants, applications that have been inputted and received, and we're going through the process now that we're at a little bit of a slow peak now towards the tail end. We are accepting applications till December 12th. That we're able to look at some of the data, and we're seeing that a, there is a large number of households that have, would have a priority of having a member over 75. And we're at that point where we don't know whether to be one lottery only for priority folks, because there are so many house applicants with a 75-year-old priority, or we might have those in-between number where you might have to draw, have lottery for the priority draw, and then have a lottery for backups who are not 75. We're taking a look at that.
So we're over 2,000 right now?
We're over 2,000 overall right now, yes. About 2,200 to be exact.
And this will close at December 12, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Are there any authority member or staff comments again? Or we are done with it? So we recess to the closed session.
Before we start our special meeting, I'd like to speak to our technical crew on GTV6. Mr. Agajanian's first name is spelled V-R-E-J, not V-R-E-G.
Thank you. You owe me for that one.
Yeah.
We must have a new staff up there.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the December 3, 2019 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call?
Councilmembers divine.
Here.
Agajanian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Agajanian.
Present.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. May we have your report?
Agenda for the December 3, 2019 special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Wednesday, November 27, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item one is Director of Community Development regarding authorization to develop and release requests for proposals, RFP, to startup tech accelerator program. One A is a motion authorizing staff to prepare and issue a RFP, seeking qualified respondents to submit a proposal for the operation and program management of a startup tech accelerator located in Glendale. B is a resolution appropriating $1 million. C is a resolution adopting findings pursuant to GMC sections 2.30 and 4.52 in connection with leasing city-owned properties at less than fair market value for economic development purposes. I'd like to also note that there's one other item on this calendar, which has been, item two has been moved to December 10's meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As Ms. Herramoto makes her way up to the podium for the presentation related to this RFP and the tech accelerator program that we are looking at here in the city of Glendale, it is very exciting that we have received a million dollars from the state of California. And in particular, I'd like to thank Senator Anthony Portantino for making this possible for Glendale and really seeing it through in terms of making sure that we were in receipt of this million dollars. So with that, I'll have Jen give you a presentation and cover all of the items where we're seeking direction from the City Council. With that, Jen.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Beers. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you heard, we are here today to discuss the release of an RFP for the tech accelerator. This is not the first time that you've heard this topic, but it is the first time that you have heard this topic with the million-dollar grant associated with that. So as you know, this has been part of the Glendale Tech Strategy, which the council first adopted back in 2016. I would like to emphasize that during that time, this has really evolved from less about tech, but more about supporting the startup ecosystem. And there are folks that are here today in the audience that represent that ecosystem. There are potential operators, startups, and those that can run the accelerator. And we're very proud of the companies that are here and are looking forward to continue to grow that. So the team that we actually hired to develop the tech strategy and to further implement it was Estelano LaSar, and we still have some funds in that contract and have been utilizing that wisely. So I'd actually like to introduce Cecilia Estelano, CEO of Estelano Advisors, to discuss our strategy moving forward in the tech accelerator. So with that, Cecilia, please take over.
Thank you, Jen. Mayor Najarian, members of the council. It's good to be back here, really good to be back here to talk about a million-dollar grant from the state of California to carry forward this work. So this is terrific. So I want to give you an overview. We're going to go quickly. I know Councilmember Mayor Protem Kandeto, you weren't here earlier time. I will go through some of this to refresh you. But what we're going to do is talk about the progress we've made since 2016 briefly, talk about the traction we've gained on creating and supporting this startup ecosystem in Glendale, and then share the next steps that we propose. So we're going to figure out this clicker. That one left. Okay. We'll go left. All right. So as Jen mentioned, we, this council adopted a tech strategy in 2016, and this just gives you a sense of what's happened in the next last three years. The number of firms that are tech-related have grown in the city of Glendale. We've also seen that the population of folks with master's degrees and STEM degrees have also grown. We're starting to see this ecosystem really gel in Glendale. And we can also see it in even stronger numbers. The Glendale Economic Development Division created a Tech on Tap meetup that created a venue for folks to get together and meet each other, and that's gone up to 2,000 members. We've also started a Tech Week a few years ago that in this last Tech Week, we saw 5,500 people attend. It's just an extraordinary growth of Tech Week in four years. Sponsorships for that event have tripled, and the number of submissions for the Pitch Fest, where companies compete to receive services and support, has increased by fivefold. So it's pretty amazing what's happened in a relatively short period of time. So this, the next step is really to focus on startups. And we really want to talk about why. Why is startups the emphasis? The emphasis is really because, as great as it is to have existing business base, the startup ecosystem, startups can take off really, really quickly. They can scale and create the revenue for the city as well as the employment for new businesses that can help support growth generally. It also is true that the folks that get these startups going and scaled tend to be problem solvers, creative, and we want them to put down stakes here in Glendale. We have many of them starting here in Glendale. We want to keep them in Glendale. We want to benefit from the investment we've already made in them by creating an accelerator that'll keep them here. So let's give you an example. We have Service Titan, started here in Glendale with 50 employees in 2016, has now scaled to 1,000 employees. It's now valued at $1.65 billion. Back in 2016, it occupied one building. Now it's 1,000 employees. It has a second location. It has offices in Atlanta and Armenia. This is exactly what we're talking about. The idea started here in Glendale, and it has scaled. And they have also become an important part of Glendale's business community. We'd like to multiply that severalfold. Okay. So why do we need a space for startups? Let's talk about that. Glendale is blessed with the ability to have a diverse business community. We have lots of different types of spaces. So Brand Boulevard, we have a traditional central business district. We have retail and large companies like LegalZoom and Age of Learning. In West Glendale, we have industrial and aerospace space, which is wonderful for the startups that actually want to build something. And in North Glendale, we have a whole healthcare cluster that is growing around Verdugo Hospital. So we have a variety of spaces. What startups need is specialized office space and support, and they need mentorship, education, and other specialized services. So that's where the million dollars comes in. That allows us to have this cohort model of an accelerator that wraps support around a minimum of 10 different startups in each cohort and helps them scale, helps them get to the point where they can receive additional investment from the private sector and then take it to scale. So why do we need a tech startup? We talk about how startups like it here. We have a lot of entrepreneurial folks here in Glendale, and many of you have been to some of the events that our terrific economic development team have put together, and so you've met a lot of local companies. But here's what happens with the local company. They love the quality of life. They love it here. But in order to scale, they sometimes need to go outside to get the services they need, to get the mentorship, the investment that they need, the specialized support services. We would really like them to be able to stay here and network, to do the sorts of things that we create once a year on Tech on Tap, or, you know, every month on Tech on Tap, once a year on the Tech Week. We'd like to be able to have a more consistent environment for them to do that, and an accelerator can do that. You can attract top companies with viable products and services. You can mentor these entrepreneurs. You have a variety of companies that are already in the area that will kind of come together around the accelerator class and offer them service, legal services, accounting services, insurance, a variety. They, why do they offer these services? Because they know if any of these businesses scale, they're going to use their services, and everybody grows. And that's the whole, the emphasis behind an accelerator. So we have tremendous interest and support from local startup leaders today, as well as other community members that see the value of scaling this business. And it's sort of interesting, an afternoon council meeting can attract this many people in the business community for support. So here's where we're at. We must came to you last year to do an RFP for accelerator, $50,000 a year. It's what the city had in resources, right? We tried to do this in the bare bones. We put together an RFP. We got five applicants. Only three were really qualified, and of those, they weren't that great, to be honest with you. They weren't, the amount of money we had to support them was pretty minimal. The proposals we got have folks who didn't have a really strong curriculum for their startup accelerator. They also weren't branded companies. They weren't folks who had done this a number of times. They were, they themselves were almost startups. So we, in the end, decided to say that these were not really sufficient proposals to fund. We wanted to make sure that the city saved its money and did a better job next time. So we used that experience to improve the RFP, and we're very fortunate that Senator Portantino saw the value of continuing to build startups here in Glendale and was able to secure funding for this grant. It's enabled us to put together a larger budget, a more robust RFP, and that's what we are here to talk to you about today. Okay. So we've talked about $1 million. It's a nice big number. Senator Portantino totally understood that we were getting somewhere with the tech strategy and we're getting somewhere with attracting startups to Glendale. He wanted to help us out. And so with that million dollars, the city has been able, the city staff has been able to go out in advance of receiving that grant and talk to a number of folks. They've talked to accelerators. They've talked to other economic development departments up and down the state, other tech professionals in the field. They have visited three accelerators, one tech company, one venture capital firm, the city government, and the Bay Area system, ecosystem. They hosted three community kickoff events. Some of you were there. I was at the last one where, I know Councilmember divine was there, and I think Mayor Najarian was there. Very successful events. The number of folks that have showed up and displayed their interest for supporting an accelerator has been tremendous. So we've taken all of that input and included it in an accelerator. So the types of folks who've been interested have been operators, and we've listed some of their logos here, corporate partners like Glendale, Community College, CSUN, Caltech, others that have been in this region have wanted to see us do this, and then startups themselves have been coming out of the woodwork, saying this is exactly what we need. Some of them are here today just to express their support, I think, but there's great interest in this accelerator. So what are our next steps? Well, we have put together kind of the outlines of a RFP for an accelerator. And what is, what goes into an accelerator? One is you have a cohort-based program that I've talked about. You get a minimum of 10 startups together. They have to compete to be in that class. They, so they're high-quality startups. Then you support these entrepreneurs with direct mentorship. We're not talking about any particular tech focus. We want to be flexible about that, but we want to make sure that this operator has quantifiable, measurable goals. So we're looking for an operator who's done this before, has a track record of success, comes to the table with a brand that means something, that can attract some of the best startups, and also, not just the startups, but the supporting businesses that will come in and contribute their goods and services, basically at either reduced rate or free, to try to build their brand. We will then connect them to the existing events that the Economic Development Department has promoted, like Tech on Tap and Tech Week and Hackathons. And we'll also be able to connect them with other institutions already in Glendale, like Glendale Community College. And here's what we hope to do. We want to showcase the local startup community, provide emerging companies with the tools and support they need to succeed and thrive in Glendale, and we want to promote Glendale as this innovation hub, a place where startups don't just start up, but they come and they stay and they build, they make roots, and they scale. And by doing that, we're going to drive local economic development by supporting these serial entrepreneurs as they form company after company, scale those companies, increase the employment base here in Glendale, and increase the tax base. Okay. So we've kind of gone through these objectives. These are what are basically listed in the draft RFP. To launch and operate a tech accelerator, we've talked about having a marketing plan, a good, strong program with business coaching, networking, and mentoring, getting folks ready to be able to give their pitch so they can get next series round funding for their startup. And most importantly, we want to make sure we have quantifiable metrics of success. This is envisioned as a three-year program. We're going to take that million dollars and spread it over three years, but we want to, year after year, measure whether this operator is actually doing what they said they would do. And we also want to emphasize that we want to recruit local Glendale businesses. The idea is to take the folks that have done a great job starting up and grow them, keep them here, because they already have an interest in this community. So here's how it works. It's, as I noted, a million dollars spread out over three years. We also include subsidized rent at 250 North Orange Street, which is about 2,500 square feet. That ends up being about $150,000 in value, about $50,000 a year, which is what we had proposed for our original incubator, our original accelerator. Then we're also looking for a very experienced operator. And here's the timeline we propose. If we get your approval today, we can release this draft in January. It'll be due in March. Staff has already been out in the field talking this up. People are very interested. They're waiting for it to come. And we hope then to bring to you a recommendation for a selection in April, and then in June we will propose it. And with that, I'll just underscore the recommendation, to authorize the preparation and issuance of an RFP to seek a qualified operator for the startup accelerator, appropriate the million dollars in the grant funds that we've been, have been made available by the state of California through Senator Portantino, and then adopt the findings in connection with creating that subsidized space on Orange, so that the accelerator will have a physical location. so that the accelerator will have a physical location in which to host its activities. In closing, I'll just say, this is a proven, a tried-and-true methodology. Staff was able to visit accelerators up in the Bay Area, in San Francisco, in San Jose, to see how it works. This has been tried in places like Santa Monica. This works. And the really wonderful thing about Glendale is, you already have a startup culture. This is about taking it to the next level and allowing those folks to stay where they want to be, the place where they started, and wrapping the services around them that they need to stay and grow roots. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Great.
We have some speakers, and then we may have some questions after that. First speaker is David Murphy.
Hi there, Mayor Najarian and members of the City Council. I'm here today on behalf of TechFire to offer my support for this very exciting day for the city and for the region, and just to thank all of you, both up here and back here and everyone in the community, and former mayor, Senator Portantino, who brought us to this very exciting moment where we are. I have to say, we've been running 50 programs. We founded in Santa Monica in 2013, done programs from Burbank, where we've run their programs as consultants to the city since 2015, to San Francisco. And, you know, looking across how different cities approach building their tech ecosystems, I really have to say I've been just so impressed by what's going on here. I mean, obviously, you know, you can see it in the audience here. We have a lot of great folks who are also just as impressed as I am, who are very eager to get the ball rolling here and, you know, get Glendale on the national scene and to obviously drive those economic development numbers and everything that we also care about as well so much. But what we're passionate about, why I founded TechFire, was to accelerate the growth of the greater region's tech ecosystem. We've kind of developed a reputation for bringing down a lot of top Silicon Valley venture capitalists. We're doing a regional LA tech awards event this month. You're all invited to, with a partner from Sequoia Capital, sort of the premier, most legendary venture capital firm in Silicon Valley. Their investments, you know, companies like Apple gone on to represent 20% of the entire NASDAQ market value. We've had VCs from Kleiner Perkins, from Index, from Ray Laka, you know, and founders of Tech Stars, and Mucker Lab, and a lot of other accelerators in our programs. And we just, you know, love seeing entrepreneurs succeed. We've had multiple folks go on to billion-dollar exits, IPOs, and acquisitions. And, you know, I think it's a really exciting time for the broader LA tech ecosystem. We saw startup Honey get acquired for $4 billion recently. People are taking notice up in Silicon Valley, and I think with what you're doing here, folks both locally in the region and across the country are going to know Glendale is a very hot place for startups indeed. So just here to offer support and to say how excited I am on behalf of TechFire and the broader regional tech community. Thank you.
We have a question.
What type of programs is Burbank doing?
So we've run their pitch festivals as well. Actually, I have to say, Erin from Juana, I saw the logo up there, won most recently. She wowed us and actually had the honor of serving on her kid startup showcase as a judge, along with Councilmember Devine, which was a lot of fun. But we've done tech summits. We had Cody Sims, who was then the head of the Disney Accelerator, keynoted our very first event in 2015. We've done tech talk events, which have won Khalid's Award of Merit. Actually, we did an event in partnership with the City of Glendale on the future of work as well. So everywhere from monthly events to pitch festivals.
How are they funding these programs?
They don't have the benefit of Senator Portantino's help and the governor's help, so no billion, a million-dollar grant, actually, I mean billion, I guess that's the next goal, right? But they've been using their city funds, so we've been a consultant to the city since 2015.
About Santa Monica?
Santa Monica, you know, kind of has the benefit of having a lot of folks, you know, want to be there already without needing to spend a lot of money. I mean, we just had an event with their city manager earlier this month. But, you know, I think there, because the venture funds are already there, you know, a lot of the companies are there, our original offices on the Third Street Promenade, you know, folks already are congregating there. But, you know, they have a number of struggles they're dealing with. I think there's an opportunity for, particularly maybe if we can get the Hyperloop built here between Santa Monica and up here, you know, to pull the gravity over here.
Mr. Garbett?
Thank you. So, did you mention that you're running the Santa Monica's accelerator program, similar to what we're proposing here today?
We haven't run the program on behalf of the city. We've done our own programs funded by a lot of Fortune 500 companies, by CBRE, by Deloitte Ernst &amp; Young, Accenture, a lot of the top Silicon Valley law firms. Wilson Cincini, they did, you know, Google's IPO, Apple's IPO, Fenwick &amp; West, DLA Piper. So we've, you know, been able to leverage private funds to bring in, you know, their money to fund all these programs. Indeed, our LA Tech Awards event at the SoFi Stadium Premier Center is free for startups who are all maybe on ramen noodle funds, as they call it in Silicon Valley, you know. So we have Baker McKenzie, a law firm sponsoring that.
What's that budget for Santa Monica?
So, you know, I mean, we've gotten sometimes, you know, as much as $70,000 from one law firm for a year's worth of programming. Wilson Cincini had us do Road to Series A, Series A funding being the first round of venture funding, you know, series of events with programs on growth hacking, on building a team, on, you know, product-market fit. So that was part of a, you know, package sponsorships. Google hosts one of that. LumaLaunch Accelerator hosts another program. And, you know, so we kind of work one-on-one with, you know, different sponsors in the private sector. And then in Burbank, you know, they've renewed our work, like we've done, I guess, for about, I've lost track of how many PSAs it's been, but each one is one off at a time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is George Bandarian.
George Bandarian here. Pleasure to be up here. I wanted to speak from multiple aspects, both as a resident, longtime resident, as an entrepreneur, and then also now kind of coming over to the other side. So I grew a tech company, which was based in downtown LA, called AMI, and sold it last year. Did the commute to downtown LA every day for over 15 years, close to 20 years. And at that time, I was in downtown LA, and all the events were always in Santa Monica. And that wasn't too bad to shoot across the 10 and then kind of get home later at night. But now that I've sold the company and I'm working out of the home office, I'm working with startups, I'm doing investing and coaching startup founders, so I'm kind of doing what you would do at the accelerator on a smaller, individual level. The idea of having to go to where all the action is in Silicon Beach, and if there's an event at 6, that means I have to leave at 4. That means, you know, the event's 6 to 9, I don't get back until 10, so I'm gone from 4 to 10, just to go to one startup event, and I have two little ones, hopefully more on the way soon. And so just, it's not conducive. So I think that was kind of my starting personal why, on why we need to do this here and now. But it's not just the pie in the sky. I mean, you know, we have Service Titan. We've proven that we can kind of incubate a unicorn, a billion-dollar company here, and I think they're a great example to different aspects of the community. And so, and they're not the only ones. We have a number of other startups behind them. So I think that that, so we have precedent. We have the startups. And then Jen and her team have done an excellent job of creating momentum and also validation. So when I work with startups, what we teach a lot is validation. It's not just about coming up with the coolest, craziest new idea. It's about going and talking to the customers and validating that there is interest and people will buy. And I think that that's one thing that we've done here with all the numbers, whether you look at the Glendale Tech Week numbers, you know, 5,500 last year, whether you look at all the people that are attending all of the community events, the, there's validation that the community is ready, the time is now, it's going to be great. And then I think there's enough people like me that are sitting here and others that are interested, that want to bring this vision to life and want to have whatever role makes the most sense to bring it to life, some more active, some more passive. But I could see very clearly, as David said, you know, really competing and giving Silicon Beach a run for its money and creating our own ecosystem here, especially working with Pasadena and Glendale as well, I mean Pasadena and Burbank as well. And certainly, we don't want to fall behind to them, so it's important that we do this, we do this right, and then kind of bring them along for the journey.
Okay, I think that's your timer.
Right.
Is that our new timer, or is that just a phone call?
Your phone.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, George. Chris Lucas.
Thank you all. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you said, my name's Chris Lucas. I've lived in the community over 30 years. Our venture firm, Black Diamond Ventures, has been on brand for a number of years. I think we were one of the first. Maybe we're still one of the only VC firms down here in our city. Clearly, I support you all having an accelerator program with Jen. And folks, we've been around from 2016 to see from 2016 to this last year how everything has grown. As others have said before me, things are happening in Santa Monica. There certainly has been Idea Lab in Pasadena, which is not an accelerator, but an incubator, and it's now time for Glendale to do this. We, as a firm, typically invest between $2 and $10 million a shot in companies. Accelerators, if you will, if you look at this, it's like a relay race. You start with an accelerator or incubator, you get something going, you see what sort of traction you have, and then you go on to get larger institutional investors. Our interest, our specific interest, is to be able to invest potentially at that time, but at this stage, we would love to help advise, be involved any way we can to see this all grow. We're here near Caltech, JPL, so forth. We have the wherewithal here to make this all happen. So I'd be happy to take any questions or share any perspective. As David was saying earlier, we too invest up in Silicon Valley and have been co-invested with a number of the large, well-regarded VCs up there. We've taken companies public, so we'd be happy to be of any support that we can. So, that's it. Yes, sir?
I have a question. How would you define the difference between an incubator and an accelerator?
Great question. Some would define it as incubators, if you get entered into their program, they will also give you money, some will to run your operation. Accelerators, again, depending how you define, and it's up to you all to decide that, accelerators may also provide money. So there, I would, for your purposes, I would look at them about the same, actually.
Ms. Devine.
So then, Chris, at the end of this relay race that you're talking about, this analogy that you're giving, does the city stand to get an award, or reward, or a prize, or profit? Is that what you're saying now, that sometimes that could happen?
I don't think that's how you're setting it up. I suppose you could. I mean, look, I believe in everyone's selfish best interest. I believe in our community, so that's why I'm here. But I'm also here because I'd love to see something grow up where we can then invest directly. Certainly corporations, Stanford is probably one of the biggest educational institutions that have taken equity in companies for allowing them to use their IP from a licensing standpoint or their facilities and so forth. I don't know. Maybe that is a possibility for Glendale to, in addition, have some sort of economic interest. That's up to you all and the operator of the accelerator to figure out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other cards. Do my colleagues have any other questions that popped up? Mr. Quintero?
I have a question for the staff. So the RFP will go out, the staff will then interview prospective companies, and ultimately it'll come to the City Council to make the decision as to who will be running the program.
Yes, sir. The final selection would be presented back to the City Council once we review all of the proposals, and we would also have a selection committee assigned to that process as well.
Okay, well, I'd like to see more than the final company chosen. I'd like to also see other companies that may have gone through the process and so forth.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Question.
Ms. Devine.
And on this committee to select, you will have some of the community that are here today, perhaps being on that selection committee?
It is our intent that we would have members of the committee who are not planning of being a part of that proposal in any capacity, but we felt that it would be appropriate to have somebody who comes from that entrepreneurship or accelerator background. And if the council agrees, that would be, that would be wonderful as well. But that is our intent, to have members of the community.
Great. Okay.
Mr. Agajanian.
I'm so happy to hear that we are receiving $1 million. So that's great. And as an engineer, I would like to see tech companies to come here and try. But in the meantime, I do want to see after three years, I guess that $1 million is allocated for three years, right? It's not just for one year. You have to spend it during three years, right?
Correct. Our intent is to spend this over a three-year time. We would really like to see the greatest impact with this public investment, and we feel that dividing it over that three-year period will do so. It will also give the accelerator the chance to hopefully become self-sufficient. We are approaching this as, this is a one-time, one-time funding opportunity, so hopefully whoever chooses to run this accelerator will also use that time to figure out how do they generate other funding mechanisms, whether that's through potential partnerships, corporate partnerships, and so forth.
I mean, that's what I'm worried about, that after three years, with this money goes away, right? And then, I don't want to see another bureaucracy in here, then we take over that bureaucracy and run the system. So those who will run this program is not part of the city, are they?
Correct. It is safe to say that, like you, we do not want to see another bureaucracy running this program, and we will not have staff running that program. That is the purpose of the funds, is to hire somebody to run the accelerator, and there are actually some points within...
Somebody, or will be a company, how it will work?
I'm sorry.
Because I'm not sure how that will work.
Of course. So it would either be a firm, so an accelerator operator could be an individual who has done this before, and perhaps this is their own venture, or it would be an accelerator company or firm. So I, really, it's the, I continue to refer to it as the accelerator operator. It could be one individual, hopefully it's not, and it's somebody who is bringing a team with them. In any event, it will not be city staff, and we have it built in within the RFP that we would also have preference for those that are coming in with a plan to be self-sufficient by the, by the end of that third-year term.
So who will watch the budget or other stuff? Who will be in charge of this, whatever accelerator or the group of people?
The accelerator operator would be responsible for, they would have an agreement with the city, and they would not, they would not actually receive the funds until they adhere to certain metrics. So the way we're proposing it is that at the successful completion of year one, we would then see the metrics from the accelerator operator. We would review that, and then we would decide at that point if they were successful to release the funds the second year, and then so on for the third. So staff would be involved in that. We would be monitoring the success based on metrics. We would monitor that, and in turn, we are expected as staff to provide that information to the state of California as well. As... As we receive the grant from the Office of GoBiz, we have expectations as well as part of that grant.
I still have a question about this. So what we, what you do, your department will do, eventually, you're going to hire a person or a company to run this.
Correct.
Then we will supervise what this person or company is doing, or is working independently, will do, and decide whatever is necessary or essential to run this. How this works?
Sure. Similar to other grants within the city, and I'm sure Ms. Beers or Mr. Lanzavame can speak to that, we would, we would serve as the grant administrator. So there would be certain expectations of the operator, and they would be supplying information to us. But the goal is still that the accelerator operator is really responsible for the day-to-day operations, vetting out the startups, running the curriculum, paying their utilities, et cetera. And it is up to us on the staff level to make sure that they are, they are adequately spending the public's dollars as they have promised, once we agree to that term.
That is accurate. Just as, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Agajanian, just as we would administer any contract with a vendor today, based on the work that they have promised to provide the city of Glendale, based on the contractual obligations, this would be exactly the same way in terms of contractual obligations for this operator to run an accelerator program, based on the grant funds that we have received from the state of California, which come with some qualifiers, based on the need to be able to report back to the state and say, yes, these thresholds have been met, hence, the release of funds will happen, because the state can invariably audit the city of Glendale to make sure that the grant funds have been expended appropriately. And so just as we would do with any other vendor, those contractual obligations and the contractual language would be in place for them to do the work, but the oversight in terms of them then responding to the city of Glendale to make sure that they're meeting all of the obligations within that contract are met. Otherwise, we would not release funds to that vendor.
So we still, our staff will be involved with this?
To a certain extent, our staff, in terms of contract administration from our end, to make sure that the release of funds are appropriately being released to the actual company who is ultimately hired, and the city council is comfortable with in terms of the recommendations that come forward, and the council says, yes, go ahead and move forward with, you know, company X, Y, or Z. Absolutely, staff has a level of involvement to make sure that those obligations are being met.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Quintero?
I would assume that track record is going to be part of the RFP, so that's comforting.
Absolutely. We...
A lot of people can put a team together to do X, Y, Z, but some of them are a company or a person with a track record in this type of endeavor. I think it's going to work out a lot better.
Yes, we could not agree more. And experience matters, and it is one of the criteria within the RFP as well.
I have a question. Do you envision, let's fast forward, we've selected an administrator of the accelerator. Do you envision council playing a role in selection of the candidates who would be accepted into the accelerator?
At this point, the vision has been that the accelerator operator would be the one ultimately selecting the startup companies that are going through their, through the accelerator. If the council has a preference on a particular type of sector or vertical, or perhaps you would like us to focus on companies that focus on civic tech, and how we at the city of Glendale can more efficiently work, if you have a preference, it would be nice to know that upfront, and actually even at this point, so that we can include it within the RFP. If the council would like to have a hand in some of the selection of the companies, I'm sure that we can have that conversation with the potential operator, but that has not, that has not been the intent going into this. Not to say that we can't change it.
Mr. Mayor, that's typically not the model. We're hiring their expertise because they can see the potential in the idea beyond what Jennifer or I could see. So we would be. Secondarily, oftentimes, they are investing their money in a company that is going through the accelerator. And so it really incumbent upon them where they have their money, they have the expertise to really look at that. If there is a sector that you want us to look at, by all means, we'd like to know that and put it in. Smart city. We all, all of my colleagues, we all have issues that we're trying to deal with. Let's put a lot of brain power to it, if that's what you want. Medicine. We have two regional medical centers. If there's something like that, but in terms of specific companies that we pick to go through the accelerator, that's not been the model.
Well, don't underestimate the brain power you have up here on council, Mr. Lanzavame.
I would never do that.
And not to mention the fact that we gave birth to the mother of the incubator, correct? The whole Tech Week thing is something that the council came up with.
Absolutely.
So, don't just cast this away as a bunch of old politicians that don't know anything. But I'm just, I'm not sure that discussion should be held now. I just want to raise that, and can that be addressed later down the line, Mr. Garcia? Or does that need to be, does that need to be placed as a qualifier in the RFP? I mean, that's rather detailed, that perhaps when we sign a contract...
It comes back.
All right, well, let's talk about it then. I just want to float that out there.
Well, it has been very exciting to have the council's involvement at every step of the way, and you have been here throughout this entire journey. Mr. Quintero, you are new to the conversation, but you've benefited from some of the decisions that you've made in the past as well. I can look at each of you, and I've seen you at our Glendale Tech Weeks, our kickoff meetings for the community outreach for the accelerator, for the Tech On Taps. So each of you have been very involved, and it has been deeply appreciated. So the potential for contracts as well, that's something that we've heard from these startups. The city, in its own right, is almost a billion-dollar company entity, and that carries some weight with it as well. Companies are hungry for some of these, for some of these contracts. So we will certainly not cast you aside. We'd love to get you included.
Keep that enthusiasm burning for us, and we'll talk about that perhaps at a later date. Ms. Devine.
Okay, I just want to say that David and I have experience with eight-year-olds entrepreneurs, so we're, I'm good to go, if I can see, you know, 13-year-olds doing their...
And several of us have been judges also in that, and we sort of have gotten the... But anyway, that's a discussion. I just wanted to float that out and...
Yeah, yeah. But I look at this...
Get you off your balance there. Mr. Agajanian.
I'm still confused. Are we involved in selection of accelerator or no?
Well, at this point, it still is the accelerator operator would ultimately be the one who is selecting the startup, but as, just based on this conversation, that can slightly change, or we can look at how, other ways that we can incorporate the city council and the city.
But I also think that, and I'm not sure if Councilmember Agajanian's question is, if you're involved in the selection of the accelerator operator, and yes, you are. Ultimately, the RFP goes out, once the RFP comes back at a certain date, the selection committee will evaluate the RFPs, give them the weight in terms of their professional opinion, then that ultimately will come to the city council for your review and for your ultimate recommendation in terms of who we should hire. So that will come back to the city council at a later date.
Ms. Devine.
Yeah. In the, your staff report, we're talking about, I think you're talking about the sites, you say, should the program be successful, the city may consider scaling the project at larger sites or locations. Are you talking about after the three years, or is that, you know, as soon as we get the program up and running, or the intent of that statement?
My apologies. That is after the successful completion of the three years.
Three years. Okay, okay. Well, I just want to say that I have been at some of the events, and I have seen the excitement expressed by these startup entrepreneurs, and I've also seen the support that's been given to them, to this whole program, by a lot of people that are in this room, and that is very impressive. I do want to, I know Art is here from Senator Portentino's office, and I want to make sure that you know that I thank the senator, and I think we all do, of course, for this grant. I see this as an immense opportunity, for so many reasons, to grow talent, to create jobs, to generate revenue. I mean, we could just go on and on. And so, and the other important factor, I think, that's standing out to me today is the fact that we're looking at local talent, local talent, and that's important to get that talent into a net and grow it, and let it succeed. So I am in favor of this, and I just am really excited to see this go to the next level. Thank you.
And you sort of hit on my point, is that we do want it to be local, and council may have some influence to persuade the ultimate decision maker to focus on the local companies. But, thank you for your comments. Any comments on the left side? Mr. Garbetsian?
I have some questions. Some questions for him, Stan. So we are issuing an RFP to hire the accelerator, the company that will run the program for us. And what is, our budget is going to be the $330,000 a year that we receive from Senator Portentino's office, as well as the $50,000 that we're contributing? So about $380,000, $90,000?
Kind of. So...
Because I want to understand that if you had $2 million, would that have been a five-year program, or would that have been still a three-year program with larger budget?
So this is a really interesting scenario, to go from a million to 2 million. I love it. But the original...
Because I know Senator Portentino has a deeper pocket than that, but I think, but we thank you for 1 million. It's a big, big, big number. Thank you.
So we would have to give some thought on how we would structure that. Obviously, we're going for impact, and how many companies, and how many top-quality companies can we support? So I'm not sure, it would take us a minute to determine whether the highest investment use of those funds would be to double it over a three-year period, or to extend it out to five.
So that's what the accelerator will do, basically. The company that we hire will come up with the budget and the programs, and...
Correct.
How to choose the companies that are going to be part of the program, and if the council wants to have some participation, that may happen at that time. I think it's all great. Idea Lab in Glendale, not in Glendale, in Pasadena, is it pretty much the same idea? Is it what we're trying to do, or it's way different? Because they bring them, they keep them there for a longer time. I think our program was maybe a few months program, the one that I'm aware of, and we talked about. Is it going to be similar to Idea Lab in Pasadena, or it's something different?
Similar concept, at least with some of the curriculum and the potential partnership, but one of the biggest differences is that the Idea Lab, when companies go there, they are staying there and for a long period of time, sometimes as long as three years or five years. With the accelerator, the intent is that the company would be there for up to four months, and after that timeframe, then they are no longer in that physical space. So that is one of the biggest differences, and that also accounts for some of the, a large portion of the cost difference as well.
So within that four months, we basically will find out if that company is going to get somewhere or not. We give them enough tools to accelerate and do well, and if they do, they stay, or if they don't, they move on? What happens in four months? What do we do with them after four months?
So after the four-month period, some of it is that you would have this demo day, so similar to what we've actually been doing with our Pitch Fest. So they do, they would then share their ideas out to potential investors. They could possibly stay for a couple of months and actually utilize some of the accelerator space that we would have, should we move forward with the 250 North Orange, or if it were in another location. But after that timeframe, hopefully, these companies are actually starting or finding a brick-and-mortar location within Glendale, and they are continuing to grow. So I would be surprised if they were to do that and immediately make it and make a billion dollars after four months, but that would be a really great story for us. But ideally, they would, ideally, they would, if they were not in Glendale before, now suddenly, they've just spent four wonderful months here, are very aware of all the amenities, are opening up at a location in Glendale, maybe at a WeWork or Industrious, and have really put, started to land in Glendale.
So the programs that Santa Monica has and LA has, I know there are some companies you listed here, from Sunnyvale, San Francisco, San Jose, San Francisco, LA and LA, Amplify LA, and Mocker Labs in LA. Are they funded by the C of LA, or they're privately, it's private companies that are funded?
Most of these are private. The ones, there are some in downtown Los Angeles, for example, Bixel, Bixel Exchange is one of them, Grid 110, where these are accelerators that do not offer any investment. They're very heavy on mentorship, and they can introduce people to investors, but they do not, they do not have the actual investment. And both of those do receive funds from LA. Bixel Exchange is affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce, and Grid 110 receives funds from the city of LA.
Okay. And one suggestion, I mean, just to follow up on what the mayor was saying, there was a talk about, there was a mention about our manufacturing stock that we have, the properties that we have in Glendale, especially on San Fernando Road. I mean, it's a great area for a tech industry, but you don't want to lose that manufacturing base either. So there are companies like Telodyne that are manufacturing component with their tech companies, so they manufacture what they design, the chips that they designed, they manufacture themselves. So I think companies like that, if we can attract them as well to bring them to Glendale, that would not only increase the employment base, also the tax base, and the most important part, that we don't lose our manufacturing properties or industrial properties to office spaces, because you don't want to... Manufacturing is, to me, very important. We were 30% in this country, we're down to 8%, so it's not that good for us if we lose that manufacturing component. And one last thing about profit sharing and everything else that Ms. Devine mentioned, well, the 250, is it North Orange?
Yes.
Is that our property, right? It's right, the ones right next to Alex Theater is...
The Glendale Arts Building, yes, sir.
Okay, Glendale Arts, Glendale Arts Building. So a portion of that could be, you know, in early 90s, we picked up a property in San Francisco on Sixth and Mission, 100,000 square feet for 60% vacant, and when the economy turned, all the dotcomers were in that place. They were leasing the basement for $3.50 a foot, $3.50 a foot, and it was just, and this property had no parking, no parking at all. We, our occupancy was 100%. And what happened at that time, most of these new companies, startups, they gave us part of their stocks. So instead of rent, we charged them stocks, they paid their rent with stocks, and when it turned, it was, it was amazing. And I think we can, I don't know, look into it, it's just an idea. Some of these companies, they are willing to, you know, give up some of their stocks, in return for rent or services that they're receiving. It's just an idea that, in the end, hopefully, we have more companies who succeed and will benefit from it as well. It's a million-dollar investment into this process, so why not have some idea and some options at the end to benefit the taxpayers as well. And I'm for this program as well. It's, I think it's a great program, and the city has done a great job in attracting talent, and Service Titan didn't happen in four months, but it happened. And they're a good example to just follow, and I think we need to improve on this process.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, before we take a vote, I have one more, one, one last item, it's a question. I don't know, this was just put in there because page nine says, city's economic development program authorizes the city council, city or city manager, council or city manager to perform certain activities as follows, and it lists the activities, and one says, dispose of real and personal property for fair market value, or less than fair market value, so long as a disposition of its fund to aid in purposes of the, of this chapter. It's on page 10.
That's the free rent we're going to give them at that location.
It would be to enter into a lease for that site.
That's, because it says dispose of a property, that's, that's something else, disposing is not just...
We will not dispose of any property.
To clarify, we...
I just want to make sure, because we're talking about the accelerator program, and then all of a sudden, I see this disposing of a property for less than the fair market value, then it's kind of...
We know better.
It was alerting to me, so I had to ask, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll move the item.
I, I apologize, I wanted to point out that we do have a substitute resolution in front of you, there was one item that needed to be clarified.
Do we have to have two motions for...
No, just to actually make...
It's one A, B, and C, right?
The maker can accept friendly amendment for the revised motion.
I'll make that, I accept that friendly amendment as well.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. That concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it. Second.
Special meeting is adjourned, and I call to order the...